Before I begin the meeting, we do have a swearing in of an alternate. Bill Spellman was appointed for an alternate for a term ending on December 31st of 2023. Mr. Spellman, if you'd like to get up, and I think trustee Augustine will swear in.
All right. I feel like we've done this before. Raise your right hand and repeat after me.
All right.
Hi, state your name.
Hi, William Spellman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Of a zoning commission alternate.
A zoning commission alternate.
For Hinkley Township.
For Hinkley Township.
County Ohio.
County Ohio.
During my term.
During my during my time in the zoning commission.
Hey, appreciate it. Great job.
Mr. Spellman has been on the zoning commission for quite some time in various capacities, including chair for a while, so we're great. We're very excited to have him back on the board to offer some additional wisdom. I'd like to call the zoning commission regular meeting to order on March 2nd, 2023 at 7:00 PM. This meeting is being recorded for transcription purposes, and the written minutes and attachments, if any, will serve as the official record of this meeting. On behalf of our virtual audience, we ask the public, joining us in person, to approach the podium in the event that they would like to speak. They will need to announce their name and address prior to speaking. Additionally, we ask the audience to save personal conversation for after the meeting as additional voices cause confusion for those attending virtually. Can we get a roll call, please?
Fisher.
Here.
Crew.
Here.
Marzullo.
Here.
Manley.
Here.
Engelmann.
Here.
And the audience are alternates Spellman and Machado.
Here.
Trustee Augustine. Trustee Eschrell, and trustee Sweattick is virtual.
And inspector Wilson is also in there.
Sorry. Thank you.
Perfect. Our first order of business is a review and approval of the regular meeting minutes from the February 2nd, 2023 meeting. Has anyone had an opportunity to review those? Are there any requested amendments? If there are no suggested amendments, I entertain a motion to approve.
To make a motion.
February 2nd, 2023 minutes as written.
As written.
Motion by Crew, second by Engelmann. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll abstain. Thank you, Mr. Marzullo abstains. Minutes have been approved. Before, Mr. Wilson, are you here for all of the topics, or did you specifically come for the discussion of the floor area living space?
Thank you, I'm gonna be here.
The entire meeting?
Duration.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Then why don't we just go in order? I think that we'll only cover discussion items one and two within the new business section, but we'll see how tonight's discussion goes. So the first order of business is a discussion regarding the B1 district of Bellis and Hinkley Hills. And so at our last meeting, there was a request that we look at the table of permitting conditional uses within each of the B1 and B through B3 districts, and then look at what might be useful for that area of Hinkley, which is currently zoned B1, and see if it makes sense to rezone that to B2 or B3, to keep it within the B1 district, or to consider a fourth district. So let me pull up her relations. I think I have the word version of this. Sixty-seven. Trustee Ashwell, can you either make me host or present, so that I can share? Or maybe I can't know. Thank you. Perfect. So I've pulled up the table as currently written, the B1 through B3 districts, and what is permitted and conditional within each of those districts. So why don't we go through, and we'll just check a box for what we think would be appropriate or not be appropriate within the Bellis-Hinkley Hills area where Buzzers Cove is located? And then we'll look at that, and then we'll evaluate whether it does make sense to create a new district or to maintain it within one of the existing districts. So offices, professional or corporate, that's permitted in all of our other districts. I would assume that that would be permitted within that district. And just so it's very clear, try to highlight it like he that didn't work. Okay. Retail and completely enclosed buildings, less than 12,000 square feet, that is permitted in all the other districts, I would assume that would be permitted.
Are we comfortable with the 12,000 square feet as being the maximum size for that area? I gotta, I don't know how, how many square feet the buildings are currently at the corner there. You wouldn't have any idea, Tom, would you?
I wouldn't, I would, without looking, I'm not sure.
I think that the issue is, and this is what we talked about when we looked at the other, the districts, is you're not saying per acre. How size, what size the building is, you're just saying 12,000 square feet. Well, why can you build 12,000 square feet on a .5 acre lot? But if you have a 17 acre lot, you can also only build a 12,000 square feet building for my health, safety, and general welfare. That doesn't sound like it makes sense because you're allowing, if you subdivide a lot, you're going to get a much higher density than if you maintain a large.
Well, that's true.
So we'll put permitted for now, again, this is just an initial evaluation. Can you see that, or do you want me to enlarge it?
All right.
Retail and completely enclosed building greater than 12,000 square feet, I would assume that that would be not permitted within that area. It's not permitted within B2 or B3, it's only permitted conditional within the B1. So actually, as it stands now, it is conditional in that district.
I don't think I would want that there. Agreed.
Yeah. Personal services and a completely enclosed building, that's permitted in all of the other districts, I don't know why it would not make sense to be there as well.
I do have a question about that one, though. Why is there a 12,000 square foot limit on retail, but not on personal services?
How, I guess, how many personal services?
And the only thing I can really come up with is if you think about the, the, what's it called, not the Magnolia Collective, but the collective on Sharon Center of the, there are several different personal services within there. There's.
Oh, the restaurant.
Well, it's got the restaurants, it's got the beauty salon, it's got chiropractor, it's got massage, it's got salt baths, it's got all sorts of stuff in there. I have difficulty with size, so I don't know if that's anywhere near 12,000. But those are certainly personal services. If someone were to also add in, I don't even know what other personal services you could add in, but you could certainly exceed 12,000 if you wanted to go that route. And I guess I'm just kind of curious why it is capping one, but not another? Or why nothing else is capped, but retail specifically is? And I think for the retail side, it makes sense, so we don't have a Home Depot or a Menards going in there. But if we're going to limit one, wouldn't it also be prudent to consider limiting others? Personally, I think it's likely that you're going to see more and more collectives coming together.
And that's what I'm wondering about here is, let's say they combine a restaurant with personal services, because you generally don't see a single use. So I don't know that you'd see a large building of nothing but personal services, but you might see a building that has multiple different things within it. Well, that is basically limited by our building sizes that we permit within the district. So that would be, the way that we would control that is, for instance, within the B1 district, only 30% of a lot can be occupied by a building. Or in the B2 and B3, we don't have building only, but we have building and parking at 80%, and that's something else that we're going to want to talk about, I think, with the B2 and B3 at some point. But that's how you would control the building size, is based upon those threshold numbers there, I would say, as opposed to.
But again, when we're looking at a 17 acre lot, 80% to include the building and the parking lot is a pretty substantial sized building. Then is that, is it any different to the township? Is it any different to have a 80% surface coverage of that area of a 17 acre lot? Is it any different to the township if it is a retail facility? Or a conglomerate of other things?
This is why I'm not sure that that 12,000 is actually a legally sound basis for this separation, because on 17 acres, you can have a 12,000 square feet building, but on a .5 acre lot, you can also have a 12,000 square foot building. You take that 17 acres, and instead of having one building separated into 10 buildings, or 10, you know, 10 different lots, and build a whole multi-use development within there, and that would be perfectly within this. And you could have many buildings that are close to 12,000, and in the aggregate, you'd have well over 12,000. But we just came up with arbitrary number of 12,000 that has no connection to lot size.
Not knowing the, not knowing the history of where the 12,000 comes from, I don't, I don't know that I necessarily agree with it being arbitrary, but I do agree that it seems a little bit, I don't know, just kind of made up. But that's because we don't know the background, backstory of it.
But what would be the legal basis? If we, if we kept going down this route, what would be our legal basis from a health, safety, and general welfare standpoint to now limit everything to 12,000 square feet? When on a 17 acre lot, you'd be limited, or on a .5, so we're not controlling density?
What would, what are, what would the legal basis be for disallowing funeral homes?
Health, safety, general welfare, I don't know.
That's, that's.
And yet, that's what we do by laying out all of these different uses. So it, and by making that argument, we're basically saying, all right, well, it doesn't matter what we lay out. If we don't have a legal, if we don't have health, safety, and welfare, then it doesn't matter what we say is permissible, what's not, it should all be permissible.
I think that there's a big difference between controlling uses in different areas, and controlling the size of a building has no connection to the actual lot. Because we're not affecting density. Right, from a zoning standpoint, we can certainly control the density. We can try to limit how much of a lot is utilized, or in a given area, how much is utilized. But it's very difficult to come up with an arbitrary number that applies to a 17 acre lot or 12.5 acre lot.
Dave, you've been on the zoning board before. Do you know if, why, the reason the 12,000 square feet is?
I was on BZA.
Or BZA, I'm sorry.
I was trying to remember, I don't remember any particular thing about it, to tell you the truth.
But, but that's in our book, and I'm very comfortable with leaving it, because it's, it's never been challenged, let's not open up that can of worms. But I am concerned where this discussion is going is, let's start adding a 12,000 square feet to each other topic. And now that has to go back through legal review, we're going to get legal opinions on that.
I didn't.
And so I just don't know that I'm going to go there.
I don't think you were going there, were you?
I'm, I'm asking why it isn't synchronous? Why we're not looking at it across the board? If, if we're going to look at it, if we're going to limit something at 12,000 square feet, why? Why is it being done? And should we continue that? And if we should, why would it only apply to retail and not to other facilities? Would a 12,000 square foot restaurant be acceptable?
Restaurants are permitted. I don't, I'm trying to figure out how big 12,000 square feet, I don't know.
That's, that's where I'm struggling.
So we spoke one time about a Dollar General or something. The average store is 6,000 to 7,000 square feet, I think is what we said. So 12,000 is slightly under, if that's the correct number, which is what we looked up last year, it's slightly under $2 generals on the average. It's a pretty large space. I mean, the warehouse that we talked about, that front warehouse up on 303 is 30, 38,000 square feet, the first day school supply that's existing, that's right next to.
The first one.
That's the, so there, yeah, that would be your perspective.
That's.
So it's roughly a third of that.
One-third.
Mr. Chairman, the average size of a Dollar General is 7,400 square feet.
Thank you.
So is it maybe confusing because personal services in completely enclosed buildings? Because of that phrase, in completely enclosed buildings, where we don't say that about bank savings and loans, and generally, those are in completely enclosed buildings. You know, why, maybe, why the distinction of adding that phrase? When restaurant, for instance, well, that could be inside and outside. But we want to make that distinction in the category of usage.
So actually, we're looking, we're looking further than.
Way further than I had anticipated.
We're looking to change the language here.
Well, I mean, that brings up the 12,000, which is a good point, because 1A and B specify, but then after number two, we don't specify in completely enclosed buildings. So.
Well, part of that is, so as it, as it's written, we would not allow personal services that are outside space. We would allow restaurants that have an outdoor portion, because that's just saying restaurant. But for personal services, we are specifically calling out that personal services in a completely enclosed building is permitted. But if it's not in completely enclosed building, it's not permitted. So you're actually drawing a distinction of what's permitted and not permitted.
I'm okay with them to the way it is.
As am I.
I don't have a problem with, I'm trying to think of a personal service that's outside.
I was as well.
Shooting range. Well, you could do tanning service.
Shooting range.
Is that a?
Shooting at the entertainment.
Is that a personal service, or is that sporting?
That's outdoor recreation.
Yeah. That's what I would think. I just couldn't think of a personal service, and I kept racking my brain. What's outside? Personal service.
I can tell you if we eliminate it. Someone will call inspector Wilson tomorrow and say, so I'm thinking about putting this in, and it'll somehow tie into that. Or screaming stance. So we're leaving it for now, and moving on, and then we'll come back.
Yes.
Perfect. Because this is not going to be the end of the conversation. This is, again, just us starting to work through this. So it'll be a while before we have anything finalized.
Okay.
Banks, savings, loan associations, and credit unions, those are permitted in all of the other districts. I don't know why they wouldn't be permitted there. From a foot traffic standpoint, I don't see that is having higher amount of traffic than retail or personal services. I just don't see a distinction that would justify not allowing it. Lawns, gardens, and nursery sales and services. I actually think this would be a great one for that area.
I can too. Why is that conditional and that permitted?
Great question. It's so that we have more checks and balances. Remember, when something's conditional, the BZA has more ability to impose restrictions. Maybe it's where the location of the mulch, you know, sites are, because that can be messy, smelly, you might want to write up against the property line, so the BZA can evaluate it. So I think one of the big reasons that we put it is a condition. Mr. Marzullo, you're pondering.
Well, I, I'm being very contrarian, and I'm not doing it intentionally. We're saying that it's so that we can have more checks and balances. Well, if we want more checks and balances, why isn't everything conditional? Then, truthfully, I don't think we need checks and balances on all of this stuff. Lawn, garden, and nursery sales, that, that would be a great place to have one. I mean, we have one right downtown.
And, but they're, none of the, none of the malt storage or the waste is anywhere near residential district. This would, could potentially be very close to residential district. And so if we don't have that as a conditional, what prevents them from putting that immediately adjacent to the residential district? And part of that is probably that they use a lot more outdoor space. You know, a lot of these other ones are more indoor controlled, so there's setback requirements that come into play. There's building requirements that come into play. For a lawn and garden and nursery, a lot of what they do is outdoor space. So it's, it's more prone to noise concerns, lighting concerns, smell concerns for that matter.
I mean, right now, we obviously are still having noise and sound concerns from, with, most would consider a very placid business in that area. So I totally see your point, but simultaneously, I mean, I'm always hesitant to give more checks and balances to the government.
So you're more in favor of much more permitted? I mean, you said, why don't we make all of this conditional, but my question back.
Well, that's, that's.
Make everything permitted, based on the lack of checks and balances that you desire.
And if you look at the number of permits permitted.
Almost everything's conditional. And I think that that's.
On sixty-seven, yeah.
Yeah. Can I put the C there, or do we?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's fine.
Drive up or drive through windows in association with a permitted or conditional use. Conditional in all of the districts, I don't know why we wouldn't allow it there.
I'm okay with that.
Outdoor displays associated with a permitted or conditional use. I think that has to be basically conditional, unless you wanted to make it permitted.
I'm having trouble understanding what outdoor display is. Wouldn't that be more what we've already defined as, like, the, a special event?
No, because remember, in business districts, a business can only have a certain number of special events. But let's say you have, let's go back to a lawn and garden and nursery, and maybe your outdoor display is some sort of wagon farmer's type display of some sort. That could be an outdoor display. It's not a sign, and it's not a special event.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah, that, that makes all the sense in the world, I'm just trying to.
I don't know how often that's come up. I don't know that we've had that many display, outdoor displays, inspector Wilson.
Well, we have a landscaper up on Boston Road and Western 30th, and they have big piles of rocks and pavers and so forth. And we get some complaints about that. So it's.
Have you requested them to come and treated that as an outdoor display and sought a conditional permit?
An outdoor display, or is it supplies?
Or is it part of the sales?
Business. I don't know. I think they would consider an outdoor display, because somebody comes in and says, I want to put a new walkway in. Well, we've got different kind of, you know, displays, I mean, paths you can put in, put this big rock beside it, I mean.
It's a little exhibit for them.
I agree with that. I think, when I think of the outdoor display, I'm thinking of an example of a patio, or an example of a.
I think that's what he was providing.
I think he said the stones, the.
The pallets, or just.
Well, they have a pallet of.
They have the, they have the crate, like, wire crate things of the stuff.
No, no, I would consider more the walking path with some stones to show.
An example.
Example, what it could look like.
Yeah.
Retaining wall. That's what, yeah, I agree with you. So we are on to restaurant. Permitted in all the other districts.
And there's one already there.
Correct. Tavern, bar, and nightclubs, conditional. I actually think that barn might be a nice place for Buzzard's Rooster Caddyshack to move to in there. Gone.
Fit right in.
There would be, obviously, if we, I mean, it is conditional, so the BZA could have some say, but the only concern that I would be is, again, that's a 17 acre district, it's a small district. Bars, taverns, nightclubs, might have some outdoor lighting, outdoor music, particularly if they have an outdoor area. So we might have similar noise concerns that we're receiving if we did have a bar or nightclub there. That was one of the ones that I thought maybe we wouldn't allow. If we did have a bar or nightclub there, uh that was one of the ones that I thought maybe we wouldn't allow there simply because of the size of that district. And the concern that they're in the valley, their noise travels up and it would be very likely to interfere with residents. Just something to think about.
So if that's the case, then I'm not disagreeing, then perhaps restaurant would be more conditional.
Right?
Because if they're gonna have a patio. Open till eleven o'clock at night. People are joking around on the patio and it's echo Glenn for a reason.
It's a consideration. So for now, would we like to make restaurants and taverns conditional and then reevaluate that as we move forward? We're not even sure yet that we're going to create another district. This was just identifying whether there was enough of a.
Yeah, I think we should see how much more of a rough there is before we decide whether or not we need to even consider another district.
I'll.
Put conditional.
I'll put them both for seed now with red for us to as two of the possibilities that might need to reevaluate. Okay. Funeral homes are only permitted in the B one district. I would assume that we would not want those in that area.
Why?
I because, well, I said I assume because it's not in B two or B three. Um and I think.
And I'm kind of curious why they're not in the B two or B three. If you moved them to B ten, B three, I'd say put them in B four as well or whatever this is. But if they're not permitted in the B ten, B three, I don't know why they'd be permitted here.
They are currently permitted in that district because they're part of the B one currently.
Well, it's kind of a a quiet um business. I would say maybe conditional. Low traffic.
Low traffic, did you say?
Low traffic.
I'm not sure if I agree with funeral homes being low traffic.
Well, obviously, they have their peak periods.
Right.
After that, I mean.
That's true.
Well, that's what I'm saying conditional maybe.
I would assume that this would only be funeral homes, not cremation services, because evident or introduce something totally different. But we only are specifying few rooms.
I don't even know if you could load a crematorium. With all the EPA regulations right there in the runoff, I don't think it'd be an option.
So we want to make funeral homes conditional. But it sounds like we might also want to make them conditional for B two, B three. Right now, we're just looking at this one, but that's that's what I'm hearing as a possibility. Automobile service stations, they're allowed in the B one and B two as conditional. They are not allowed at all in the town center.
I would say not allowed.
With the current definition, I'd say no.
Small power equipment is only conditional in the B one district. I would assume that it would not be permitted within the B be within this possible district.
I'd agree. Okay, I'm good with that.
Churches and other places of worship are conditional in every district. I would assume it would be conditional here as well. Libraries are conditional in all the district. I would assume they're conditional. Schools, private or public, conditional in all of the districts, I would assume conditional. They're even conditional within residential districts. So I don't know how I would not. Daycare centers, child, child or adult, I would assume that those would also be conditional there. I think, again, I think that those are even conditional within residential, although don't quote me on that. Host office is conditional in all other districts, I would assume conditional. Feel free to stop me if I'm moving too fast. Assembly hall meeting place for fraternal charitable social or other organization is conditional in all their districts. I would assume it would be conditional here. Go ahead.
I don't know that I would consider a conditional in anywhere above B one.
Why didn't you say that?
Because because let's say that I I'm just looking and one of the considerations was to make the fire, the old fire station. Essentially, some sort of assembly hall. And so we don't want an assembly hall. I could understand if you're concerned about the size of it or something, but to say no assembly hall, I mean, assembly halls don't have to be large.
And I'm more thinking, again, from the noise and bordering residential areas.
So we said restaurants and nightclub. Not taverns and nightclubs are conditional. So why would assembly halls not also be conditional? Because I would certainly say a barn and tavern is more likely.
Much more likely, yeah.
And assembly hall.
And I guess the the difference in my mind is that the restaurant bar nightclub, all that stuff is something that the surrounding residents are likely to utilize. Whereas an assembly hall meeting place or fraternal organization, if that is there. It's routinely being used and rarely being accessed or utilized by the surrounding neighbors.
But do we look at whether it's going to be surrounding neighbors or neighbors from two miles away that are going to utilize something as part of zoning?
When you're considering the cost benefit, I think it's.
But health, safety and general welfare.
Yeah, and so the general welfare for the people nearby to it, I think that's that's worthwhile.
How much? I don't see the noise issue for a meeting center.
Well, and this, this is kind of going back to honestly, it was something that Ray brought up all the time about the wedding bar. You have something like that. And it's a nuisance to the folks around them on a regular basis.
That was a residential district, right? That the wedding barn was in a residential district where someone wanted to basically open a commercial establishment with houses.
Absolutely.
Right in the rest. This is a business district.
Absolutely. It's it is a business district, but it abuts the residential district. So you put something of that nature in. And you could have significant issues impacting the residential area right next to it.
I don't see the noise factor in this one. I don't I I don't see the noise factor for a meeting space.
Okay.
I mean, I help me understand where the noise is if in comparison to a daycare center or a school.
Well, a daycare center or a school is certainly not going to be open at eleven o'clock at night. With the DJ. With people dancing, with people drinking.
Restaurants.
Restaurant and bar could be, yeah.
I I see your point. It's in a, it's a meeting center though. It's in an enclosed facility. It's not outside.
Doesn't necessarily say that.
Well, it didn't say when I was looking at two different ones.
Assembly hall meeting place.
Okay, assembly hall, meeting place. I, when I look at that, I think of inside. I don't look at outside.
And I'm I'm thinking more of like a venue, but a a place where, okay, we're going to have weddings. We're going to have a place for photographs and enjoying yourselves outside.
So I wasn't looking at this assembly hall as a place of where alcohol is served or food is served. And it could be, it could be, but that's not how I was looking at it.
And that's immediately where my head went.
Yeah.
So.
You don't have alcohol, sorry. I'm not.
I just think that the probability of noise from a tavern bar nightclub is significantly more than a subway. I can understand, you know, absolutely, the assembly halls could be have an outdoor function. Absolutely, they could have fighting outside at times. They could have some reception outside.
The the biggest difference between a restaurant or a nightclub and a an assembly hall or venue is generally speaking, bar, bunch of really small parties. If one party starts to get out of control, they can be told, you're not welcome here anymore, leave. The rest of the noise, the rest of the patrons aren't raucous. It's this table of two, this table of four, this table of six. Meanwhile, at a wedding, something of that nature, everyone gets riled up and feeds on the energy of one another. And I'm not saying this in a negative way. But it tends to get much more lively and it's more difficult to calm it down.
Could I suggest you leave it as a conditional and the BZA sees fit to require they say there's going to be three hundred guests or whatever on average, that they're required to have a policeman on premise or some other form of security that would could handle that kind of thing. I think we're we're beating this to death.
And I just don't know why an outright man for this would be, makes sense.
VFW is in American legions around the country. I've been in a number of where they are in residential areas. Maybe when they first opened up, there was people complaining about, but I've never seen any complaining. And most many wedding venues do require some form of security.
And a lot of them get complaints.
I agree. So do a lot of bars.
Chairman Fisher, just to put it out there also, is our, we may want to consider what our liquor licenses look like for those families as well.
Just for Judy when she's going back, uh that was Mrs. Chita. I'm not familiar with liquor licenses to know whether, does the liquor control agency have certain districts that they allow certain, certain. So we could actually pull up that district and see and could someone apply for a permit that exceeds what's allowed in that district or would they be locked to that district and they can't vary that?
Excellent. Cause yeah, they can.
It's the state of Ohio has a regulation. I believe they have a number per like for Hankley, I and I don't quote me, but I think there's like three that you can have in Hankley.
But you can buy, let's say, you know, buzzer truce goes out, they could buy that liquor license. And that would allow them to do whatever they want within that scope of that.
And not knowing they vary. So they have class five or I can know they are, but they can vary in what they allow, like a wedding and just something to think about when.
Thank you.
And I guess it might actually that kind of adds knowing that two of the licenses are going to be hitting the market.
It it still doesn't. Taverns and bars to me produce more noise, more light generally than an assembly. What's the rest of the, what is everyone else thinking? Keep it as conditional for now. And again, we're just starting this process or take it off the table.
Leave it as is.
I'm good with conditional.
I believe it's conditional for now and I'll mark that one as a red. Is this something that we had a lot of discussion on? So we focus on those areas if we need to come back to. Indoor recreation is conditional in all other districts. I would assume it could be.
It's permitted in. Correct, B one, correct. Thank you.
There was some discussion that this would be a good recreational area. So one of the considerations is we could make it permitted within this area if we wanted to focus it that direction. But again, once you do that, you don't know what the indoor recreation will be. If you make it permitted, it it will be much easier for them to go through without a checks and balances.
And knowing that we decided that or that we've said, we haven't decided that it would be good for a recreational area. I wouldn't be opposed to be permitted for indoor recreation.
I'm good with that as well.
What about indoor firing range?
I'm still good with that.
Just making sure.
What about scene seventy five that's indoor and has a bar?
Well, then that becomes a tavern bar nightclub.
You have a conditional, gives you a little more.
Would that fall under a bar though? Because there's liquor.
How do you, when you have a mixed use building? Are you looking at each one of those individual uses? So are you saying, look, you're building this big building and part of it's being used for recreation? Part of it's being used for a bar. You have to confirm that both of those uses would meet.
If you have the plazas divided up, I mean, you're looking at the individual business. Each time, yeah.
What if it's a single business like scene seventy five that does four different things? They have indoor, in their entertainment, indoor recreation, go kart facilities, basketball hoops, a bar, maybe a restaurant. Are you looking at their primary? Are you looking at each use?
That's a good question. I would think you look at the primary and and hopefully it has conditional use because I don't think I've had that since I've been here, but um we were both industrial and business for looking at the individual.
So for now, we're leaning towards permit it for indoor for. Okay. Outdoor recreation is conditional everywhere. I would assume that we would want condition, conditional here for that.
And it's not conditional in B three.
Oh, that's that's wrong on the, I must have a version that I was working on before. Thank you. Dwelling units above the first floor are only conditional within the B three district. And I would assume that we would not want them in this district. How we remove short term. Hospitals, medical clinics, urgent care facilities, ambulance and emergency, I would assume that we would not want those in this district. Senior citizen residential facilities. This would be a quite, this actually might be one that we'd want to consider there. Because it would be much more closely related to the.
Residential.
Residential.
When those be detached.
When those be detached or attached.
I was gonna ask, what is the definition here?
Right, do we define it as just detached units? So it's more residential like, you know.
Or is it another?
It fits within, it can be either. If, as it currently is written, it's a senior housing, then you would refer to the section on senior housing. That would not fit here is currently because of the current infrastructure there. I'm sorry, what was it? That sort of development would not fit there because of the infrastructure. It doesn't have sewer, it doesn't have water. So at least as a, based upon the current infrastructure, if they were to do a senior citizen presidential facility there, I would assume that would be much more like a nursing home type facility. Hankley elementary type facility there, something where it'd be a large building with a septic plant on site and some sort of well on site, given the current infrastructure. It's not to say that that infrastructure won't change, but that would be what I would imagine right now.
So maybe not.
So are we back to leaving it off?
Leaving it as it is or removing the condition?
That's a confusing question as well. As it is currently, it's conditional because it's B one. And what I'm suggest, what I, I meant currently there's a blank in that spot. So as is would be blank, which means it would not be permitted. The other option would be conditional or permitted.
So I'm not, I'm, I'm doing my own little chart, so.
So there's nothing in that chart right now. It's blank. So as, as it stands right now, it's not permitted.
Well, I think it should be. I'm not sure if I'm leaning towards conditional or permitted though.
I'm leaning to leaving it out.
I'm leaning towards conditional. Just because, again, I think that that's a fantastic site for it relative to the metro parks and relative to the other residential communities would be very quiet with very little light pollution. Marzullo? We can, we'll, we'll mark it red regardless. So we just need a letter for, for now. What are you leaning towards?
Without any sort of without any sort of density verbage, I don't think we can do that township.
Signs permitted? A similar use would also be, similar use finding would also be permitted, I would assume. So going back out a little bit. Where do we see differences? There were some differences relative to the other districts. I think predominantly the, the differences were in the restaurant tavern bar. Otherwise, I think we could put it within either, within the B two, not B three. Because B three has the dwellings above the first floor. But the considerations would be, does the, the distinctions that we might want to see there, which are really related to restaurants and taverns, is that enough? I guess it's actually just with respect to restaurants because taverns and bars are conditional. So just restaurants would be the only one that would make conditional as opposed to permit it. So the only reason to justify to me having a new district is if we thought that that was so important to have a resident restaurant be conditional that we need to create another district. Otherwise, I'd suggest we just put it within the B two district.
Did we not also include funeral homes in there?
No, oh, you're right, you're right, conditional. So then there would be two items.
And the senior.
And the senior. Indoor recreation. So I mean, there's, there's quite a few differences.
So do we want to look into a fourth district? Is that where the wind's blowing? The benefit to fourth district is also just as a reminder, we can look at lot areas and lot requirements in for that area that are distinct from the lot areas and size requirements and building setbacks of the other districts. So there are some other benefits to it. If for seventeen acres, it warrants a fourth business district.
But it makes sense to involve the residents in the business, say here's the list, what do you think should be in it?
I think certainly.
And would there be enough people living or working there that would take part?
There's only three people living and working if you're actually talking about within the district.
Only three people?
Within that district?
Yeah.
That own.
That own. That's right.
Surrounded. So I would imagine we could get a fairly quick survey of, right.
Well, we wanna.
I mean, in, in all fairness, if we do move forward, it's gonna go to an open hearing anyways. So we'll, we'll get that feedback.
And we won't be sending a text amendment for, for many months. So we'll have this sitting here for a while. And then we'll go through the whole process. So this was just one topic for us to try to work on. Get some resolution to, in the direction that we want to head so that we can start to manipulate the book accordingly.
We also said automobile service stations, correct? Did we capture that? Is not allowed?
Sorry, I didn't flag them as I went.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm just looking at it, want to make sure.
Yep.
So I would just keep it as its separate column. It sounds like there's a.
It seems like it's pretty substantial difference.
Yeah, I mean.
We'll go through with that for now and then we'll see what the public has to say about it. And, but for now, we'll tentatively plan on the fourth district and work through it accordingly. Before I move on to the next topic, I will let, if there's any public comment pertaining to this topic, go ahead, Mr. Spelman.
So have we answered what I think is a more fundamental question of, do we want this to even be a business district as opposed to, to a residential district? Not only asset, we seem to have spent a lot of time, last year we spent a lot of time on this, we're spending more time on this this year. And we jumped right into defining uses. Into me, that district itself sits in a rather interesting location. It seems very on place given the surrounding areas. So I'm just curious if we've answered that. If we've answered that fundamental question first before we proceed. So that's maybe just one comment. I have other comments, but I will allow a response.
So at least in my mind, a, for now, it was it was closed for residential because we went through the whole process last year. We heard from public comments. And so to rehash the same discussion this year, have the same public comments this year just seemed inappropriate that that, that had been decided. We voted on as a commission, we heard from the public. We heard from the planning commission, we heard from the trustees, and it was decided that that didn't make sense as residential at that time. So I don't know that there's been any circumstances that have changed in three months that would justify us restarting back at resident. You know, looking at it again for, it doesn't make sense as residential.
Well, I can say that at least from my vote perspective last year, to keep it as a business district, that wasn't me because that's how I felt it should be. It was me because I don't feel that at the time we had enough information and just thought behind how to proceed, you know, in that area. And so instead of changing it, a rash decision, just tabled it or effectively let it remain as is. Purely an opinion on things. It does, you know, again, my opinion, it seems to just not fit. Business district in that area, especially the uses that you just talked about up here, does not fit that area whatsoever. If this commission is intent on making it a, keeping it a business district, my personal opinion would be to see it become a separate district to give you a lot more flexibility beyond just the permitted and conditional uses. And, and then my last comment on that would be to make, to make all uses conditional. Just to give us the most amount of latitude in terms of, you know, keeping any use harmonious with that, that particular area.
All uses within that district or all uses within all districts?
No, just in that district.
If anyone else wants to respond to Mr. Spelman's first comment in particular, I'd be very interested to hear if anyone else has anything to say on that.
We all voted last year. So I, I preferred to have it stay residential, but.
Yeah.
Wasn't the.
I think it was a split vote. Now you're flip flopping your vote, it would have gone the other way.
Well, I'm not flip flopping any votes. My, my comment was I, I at the time voted not to change it because I felt we were rushing into things. My personal opinion, and by the way, it's a little different sitting over on this side of the. No, my, my opinion is just in, in listening and in looking and, you know, having gone through that process last year. It feels like that ought to be a residential area, not a business area. I'm just throwing it out there, hash through and say, no, we've made our decision and move on and my feelings are turned out their way.
I absolutely agree. You know, when we started out last year, I thought that it made perfect sense as a residential district. I didn't understand why it was not a residential district, but for the fact that there was some existing red business there. But we heard from the surrounding neighbors, we had, we had the opportunity to hear from anyone within that area or around that area that wanted to speak. We had very little public input. But we did have a lot of public input from the homeowners within that district that were very vocal about, they want to keep this a business district. So I felt like we didn't have enough voices coming from the other side to suggest that this should be residential. The other point that, that we didn't have, you know, that it felt rushed, I feel like we had five or six discussions on this. And I felt like we had a, a very robust discussion as to whether it should be business or residential. And I don't know what another two or three meetings would have resulted in. Because going all the way through, through planning services, I thought that this was going to be residential. And it wasn't until we heard from the public comments that it finally changed the way I looked at it. That was, that was at least how I perceived last year's progression of this process.
The feedback was skewed, certainly. And like everything zoning, feedback is always love to be skewed. Majority of people will be complacent, right? And the people that are affected should, I, I heard a lot of, I should say a lot, I heard two or three of the owners talk about business uses that, that they, you know, planned on doing the last, you know, two, three decades, haven't got there yet. So perhaps one of these days we'll get there. At least one of the uses would have been not, not permitted to begin with, not, not even conditionally permitted. So I, I, again, I'm not beating that horse on it. Just seems like I don't know. Feeling the question. I don't feel like there's closure on that question.
I, I agree. Within seventeen acres, I don't know how you control the noise or you control the light. It's just too little of an area to adequately prevent some of that from happening. But those residents had the opportunity to speak and wanted to keep it business. And so that's for me, the closure is, we heard from those residents, the ones that were most affected by it, and they wanted to keep the business. So we'll look at it and we'll consider what sorts of businesses, because right now we're in our broadest spectrum of businesses or B one district. So maybe we'll limit it to try to control that a little bit better. But I just didn't see the appetite to move it to a residential district.
Well, I know my comment was, you know, give it a try when it was suggested. But if it doesn't work out, then look at making a B four district. You know, and up to that point, we had not heard from the property owners and, you know, those are the, the people with the greatest interest that's staying because it's property they own.
I certainly want to be sensitive to, to the property owners. I'll get you wrong in any of this, this conversation. We let this township get driven by individual property owners, we perhaps could end up with more of what we have coming on in the township today. And I look at that area, in my opinion, I look at that area, it's a business district in a surrounded, very tightly, very tightly a residential, a park-like setting.
I agree.
And we have an opportunity as this zoning commission to step back and say, before that thing becomes inundated, who knows? I, I don't, I don't know what the future holds, but before it becomes inundated with, with more congestion, more noise. You have an opportunity to step back and say, what's best for the township? And in this conversation of, we should make another business district in this township, is that really driving rural character? Especially in that area? And are we at, are we at a, a short, a, a short supply of business districts? I was running township. Just things to consider in the conversation.
With, with response to that, we kind of have to back the truck up a little bit. It's not that we're, we would be creating another area of business within the township.
Correct.
It is currently a business district. Realistically, what we've been discussing this evening is, all right, what are appropriate business uses in an existing business district? We are not saying, let's create another business district, oh, right on three oh three. And at three oh three and River, why not? That's not what we're doing. What we're trying to do is say, all right, we discussed this for months on end. And the feedback we received, whether the majority of the board agreed with it or not, was this needs to remain a business district. There was one resident who made a very solid point of, did anybody actually request this? And frankly, that's, that's a pretty solid point that I had not considered. It really isn't our role to come in and say, we're just gonna yank this from you. Especially when the feedback that we did receive was, I've been planning on opening a business here. Yes, one of them was not allowed, was, was an impermissible business. But we talked about it for months and months. And now what we're trying to do is say, all right, the appetite to change it to a strictly residential area isn't there. So what does?
So what does make sense? What is best for the township in this pre-existing business zone? And do I think that it should ever been a business district? Personally, no. But it is, and so we deal with it.
I I thank you, Matt, and with all due respect, it's absolutely this commission's business to to look at every aspect of of this township. And to make sometimes decisions that aren't, you know, going to be widely accepted by a landowner. And so it's it's absolutely our job, our role to scrutinize that in this particular case, you're right, it is an existing, it's an existing business. And I'm not insinuating that, you know, we're going to uh expand the business district. But I believe it's our our role as a zoning commission to look at that area and say nobody, nobody seemed to be able to come up with the real history of how that became a business district.
Correct.
And more than one person on this zoning commission, including the alternates, feels that it should have never been a business district. And here we are talking about leaving it as such. And it doesn't have to be something zoning doesn't have to be prompted by a a landlord or or residents. I mean, changes can be prompted by the zoning commission. And that's all I'm saying is it's 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 our role, it's our function uh to look at and to scrutinize everything zoning related. And and ask those stuff questions, should it be or shouldn't it be?
I absolutely agree with you. I I think the thing that I'm I'm stuck at is we had six or seven meetings, six meetings, I think, on this topic. And what new information has come come to light or what has happened? Or what dynamic has changed that's going to shift this conversation so that we're not going through six more meetings of this? Only get back to the same point of it won't be residential. I just haven't seen anything that's come out that makes us say, wait a minute. Now maybe the minimum's there for residential, whether it's within zoning commission or whether it's with the outside public or some other external factor. I've just seen nothing that suggested that the that there's been a change. So what, you know, I was advocating for the residential district. I wholeheartedly agree with everything you just said. But we we went through this. And frankly, the the risk of doing nothing I think is greater than the risk of cre- creating a new category of business district form.
The risk of doing nothing is
The risk of keeping So we're trying to mitigate the potential harm while recognizing that the appetite wasn't there for residential. Now, you know, and and it's very possible that if we do get to a text amendment phase, that when we start going through the open hearing, then change everybody in Echo Glen and everyone in all the surrounding areas say, no, this should be residential. At which point we're okay, now what do we do? Right. Because we've heard from the landowners, now we've heard from all the surrounding landowners who are unified. But without any of that, we're we're doing what what we can only see is, I mean, you you've been up there, you you know, and it's it's not easy.
And part of this conversation and here I am sitting on the other side saying, hey, you should think about this. It's it's not, it 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 does, there is something, there's something that that eats away a little at my gut. When, and I'm not going to do this, but if I sit by a show of hands, who thinks that should be a residential area? We all know the number of hands that are going to go up. Right? I'm not going to put anyone on the spot, but boy, something seems hypocritical about that.
Well, what we can do, and we've all been listening to you, Bill, and I we we do agree with you, right? I voted residential. I would raise my hand, but when we started this process tonight, we were looking at these three districts. And we we had a fourth column to look at where we disagreed, right? But in my mind, that's that's what we did. However, in my mind, if we're going to create a whole different district, I'm going to go back through the ones that we said. Does it fit? And I'm going to say, looking at it in a different perspective than what I did when we came in here. So I I, you know, there's there's a couple of them that I'm not, I'm going to say, no, I don't think it goes there. So the exercise we did earlier is different when when I came in than what we're going to do now if we now say this is another district.
Yeah.
So, you know, I foresee more limitations.
And it's quite possible that with some public input, that list can change even more limitations. And I think it's a good exercise to go through each one of these to see where the differences are and what is it that wouldn't be acceptable there and what would not, and we got to start somewhere.
Frankly, it wouldn't be a terrible exercise to do in all of the districts. Absolutely. One of the things I'd like to do is, you know, we can look at the tables again, we started to do that last last year. What we did not look at last year at all really was the error requirements and the building setback requirements. And so we met neared the B two and the B three, for instance. But the B two now allows eighty percent parking in buildings uh on on a lot. And maybe that could be smaller because that's no longer town center. That's not where you want the high density. So we can reduce that down to not allow eighty percent of the of the lot to be buildable. Um, those are things that certainly would like us to do as part of this text amendment, and as part of that, we can review this again. You know, I I'm just a person, I like to get pen to paper, I like to have, give us a starting point, something to work off of. And then we'll continue to refine that as we go along. And so this exercise was great for putting something down. And then, you know, we'll start going through some of those other topics, then we'll come back and we'll revisit this again and work from our way through and reevaluate what makes sense. And and then we'll certainly have had some public comment opportunities. Perfect. Oh, let me go ahead, come up and state your name, please, and the dress.
Good evening. My name is Doug Meansur. Uh, we're a property owner at seventeen twenty seven Hinkley Hills Road. And uh what I would like to say this evening is, when considering outdoor recreation, I think we need to consider the safety and golf balls as a nuisance. I would also like to request that the Hinkley zoning commission amend zoning of prohibited nuisances to include projectiles. Whereas such projectiles from any business or person engaging in outdoor activity or recreation be required to maintain all projectiles within the limits of their own property, such as no harm, damage, or risk be passed on to another property, person, or to put the public at risk. These projectiles should include golf balls, which have been documented by the Hinkley Police Department to cause personal injury and property damage.
Everyone has been received to your email that you received, so those have been all forwarded to them. I also have as part of my chairman's report, topics I've received that will evaluate whether we want to add in for conversation as part of that, so.
Thank you.
It's already eighteen, so I don't think we're going to have time to really discuss the other two. I had thought that we would get through at least term consistency. I don't think we're going to. Uh, but at least to give us a little bit of information on it. I I know Inspector Wilson's here and he had a few points that he wanted to bring up. So in case he's not here at the next meeting, I'd like to give him the opportunity to speak, Inspector Wilson, if you'd like to, on on this topic. And then I have one other item on this topic, and then we'll close off the new business and move to the chairman's report. Does that sound reasonable?
Well, just briefly, uh, at the B Z A meeting, uh, there was a question brought up about floor area versus living space. And uh, my comment tonight is when when I figure a schedule, I mean, a a fee schedule uh on a new home or a accessory building, whatever it is, uh, I'm basically looking at the footprint. And uh, uh, I I, if it's a new home and well, almost any building, um, I go by the architectural plans. Uh, they they, the architects put on those plans how big the first floor is, how big second floor is, or how how big the barn is. And uh, uh, I check that and and go with that. Now, sometimes architects don't put on porches and steps and things like that, so then I add that to the to the picture. And uh, I know on page forty four of your book, it talks about living space, I believe. And I think what that's referring to is to make sure we measure correctly the minimum house that's allowed in uh Hinkley. And right now, it's one thousand two hundred and eighty square feet. So uh, that's awfully small. Most of the living rooms that are being built uh today are much bigger than that. But I bring it to your attention because uh something, I mean, I know that this committee talks about how the how the code reads and so forth. So uh, the other comment I'll make on uh how we figure the fee schedule. Somebody's going to build a new house, you you have to have a zoning permit from us before it can go to the county. And then the county uh looks at that. And our uh zoning department has to agree with with the county. And once in a while, uh, I'll get a call from the county and and say, uh, explain this, you know, and uh, and so I know that they're looking to make sure that uh, the fees they charge uh are in line with the the footprint that we're looking at. But that's how they look at it too, as a footprint. So that was my only comment on that, that uh, as you're looking at the language, uh, we have some languages, this floor area and some that says living space. And I don't think it does say footprint in there, it was just the way I was uh trained by the county and by my former inspector to uh figure that fee.
Thank you. So so just as background, we have living area, which is in several places, page forty four, sixty one and eighty eight. We have living space, which is only a definition on page ten. And then we have floor area in several places, most notably, when you look at this yourselves independently. Look at page one sixteen, which talks about a business area, floor area. As far as I can tell, which is related to site plan. As far as I can tell, we, most areas floor area is defined within the section. So there's a floor area of calculations of parking, floor area for residential, uh, both the R one and the R two. Uh, but for business on page one sixteen, it refers to floor or or floor area as well. I don't have a control F, so I can't find it quickly, but it's there somewhere because I found it. It had to do with site plan.
Here we go, B three.
Thank you. Any existing or previously approved development meeting the criteria of B one or B two above that proposes to alter, construct or otherwise modify a user site, including expanding the floor area of the permitted use. That's just not defined anywhere what floor area is for purposes of business. So that's just something that we'll want to look at as we move forward with this. Um, otherwise, I think living area and living space are synonyms. Uh, so we'd likely can just replace living space on in the definition of living area. Um, but we do have to look at a little bit at floor area. And then as Inspector Wilson was saying, for his calculations for fees, he doesn't actually use floor area. He uses this completely different uh term, I think he called it floor plan, because he calculates part of the basements. So because basements can include some living space. And our floor area and our living space and floor area definitions both exclude basements from that calculation. So just as a little insight as you work on this, um, regarding institutions of of human care and uh family homes versus group homes, which are all discussed in our code. Um, I will send to each of you this U S Department of Housing and Urban Development and U S Department of Justice joint statement uh regarding state law, state and local land use laws and practices as they apply to group homes. It gives a brief definition and also explains what we can and cannot do with respect to group homes, family homes. Uh, institutions of family care, I did find a few, and I'll scan these and provide these to you. A few definitions of institutions for human care, it's a quite broad definition. So it surprises me that it's a conditional use within our districts, residential districts, because it includes buildings or groups of buildings providing health, medical or rehabilitation services to individuals, such as hospitals, nursing and residence homes, orphanages and rehabilitation. So it's a very expansive thing that could be within a residential district based upon this. Um, they also, this same, what I liked about a couple of these is uh, they also provided definitions for rehabilitation homes and residential care facilities, a residential care facility being basically a residential home. Um, so I liked finding some zoning language that talked about all three of those, basically to help us guide how we should define things. Um, so just something to look at uh that I'll provide to each of you for the next meeting as we work through that. The term consensus consistency section will be our our topic that will focus most closely on next meeting. And then we'll go through a couple more topics. And then once we kind of get a collection, we'll go through them all again and reevaluate the stuff we've done today plus other things. If that's okay. Uh, chairman's report, similar use finding, sun belt tools applied for a similar use there. Rental equipment company, we allow business construction uh within business construction equipment within the industrial district. And so they ask for them to be considered a similar use to that. Um, this would be the first time that B Z A has reviewed the similar use, because as you remember, we moved it to the B Z A for evaluation as opposed to us. I think they did a great job. They had about a thirty minute discussion and uh agreed that Sunbelt is a similar use. So they're able to proceed forward. Uh, I they, I think they're still evaluating whether they need to obtain any variances or not.
That's correct.
So that would be their next step. They'll go back to the B Z A for variances if they do need any. Uh, otherwise, we'll see them at a preliminary site plan, assuming this moves forward. Arborcrest replat, uh, you saw probably that uh there's a very large parcel in the back of Arborcrest uh that they're requesting to have replatted to divide it into three subplots. It's currently one subplot, it extends all the way to Bellis Road. So they want to have two cul-de-sac lots and then another lot that comes directly off of Bellis Road. So that will go before the planning commission because it is a replata of subdivision. Mr. Rosal, will you get a question? It's not a conservation. Correct. So the the lots within the within the subdivision will be a little over two acres, I think. And then the other lot will be much larger that's coming directly off of Bellis. Um, I know that their HOA has provided comments uh opposing this for a variety of reasons. Uh, from a zoning perspective, there was really no reason for the zoning inspector to have any oppositions to this. Uh, they are seeking our comments, so if you do have any comments, just go ahead and send them to Suzanne. Um, and then I'll prepare, provide um some paperwork. According to our organizational minutes, we can elect to have someone attend this meeting of the planning commission, which will be their August meet or their April meeting, excuse me. If anyone would like to go, uh, this is not something that I think we necessarily have to have a representative there for. Uh, but certainly if someone wants to be there as a representative, that would be fine.
What's the date on that?
Do you know when the planning commission? I need to print out their calendar for twenty twenty three. Yeah, their April meeting. Does anyone have a desire to attend? If so, we'll appoint you as the liaison. No?
Well, I, at this point, I don't know yet. I might just go for curiosity.
Does anyone think that we need to have our representative there from the zoning commission?
Well, I think if somebody has comments, we should have some representation. But I'm, you know, when you say you're asking for comments, are those personal comments or are those comments presented by zoning commission?
So if we appoint you to come, go on behalf of the zoning commission, you'll be speaking on behalf of the zoning commission, not as personal comments.
So I'm not looking to go necessarily, but if somebody does have comments to give you, that would be representative, then somebody would need to go.
The the only thing I think that might be applicable is the verbiage we have that we instituted for conservation developments, where all sublots must be accessible through a main thoroughfare.
Specifically, it's specifically tied to um conservation developments. But I know the intent was to expand that to just all PUDs. I don't know that we got there. But I think.
I think the the other thing would be that that final lot, while it it would be, I guess, considered part of the subdivision, it's a replat. So it's it's basically. A a lot directly off of. I mean, it's just a, it's just an empty lot that's no longer part of the subdivision. Right, the re- reason that that works for conservation is because. As part of the calculation process, they have to be tied into a single road. But if you have seventy-five acres and you wanna subdivide it so that four of those lots are just coming off of Stony Hill, for instance. And the rest of the lots are connected to the main road, you're permitted to do that. There's nothing that we can do to stop you from having those four lots connected off of Stony Hill, as long as you have the frontage requirements.
Yeah, the only difference is that the actual site review and everything that went through, it was, all right, this is what we came to you with and.
And that's why they now we're changing. They do have to go through a replat because of that.
And the, actually, the the reason for that verbiage, it's not because of. It 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 was because, all right.
It was because someone was pulling thirty, a a large lot off of a different road, correct?
Correct, but it was still, it was still supposedly part of it and paying their HOA fees.
Yeah, yeah. If you wanna provide comments, just get them uh to Suzanne. I think we have until the fifteenth or so of the month. So just try to by the tenth of the month to provide comments and then we'll compile them and send something. Otherwise, I won't send anything written comments to.
As the homeowners association expressed why they are opposed, too much traffic, too much noise, too much dirt.
Trustee Augustine, do you wanna speak at all on that?
Um, I received an email from the HOA president with regard to their concerns. It's my understanding, and I put this in my comments to the planning commission, that um. They have been trying to contact the new homeowners who are supposed to contact the HOA before they do anything with the lot. And furthermore, there was a previous planning commission report that dates back to. Two thousand and eleven. That shows that, bear with me, I have to find it here on my documents. It says in staff comments. I believe it's number. Number three, if approved, subplot forty-eight will have access to both Arborcrest Drive and Babcock Road. The applicant has indicated that the subject parcel is to be used as a nature preserve. Staff suggests that access should be limited to one of the two streets. And the alternative, the interior layout of the parcel should be designed so that it prohibits, or at least discourages, through traffic. Because as you know, our comprehensive plan is very um specific on having little pods of neighborhoods, not group streets.
So this is where, this is where they, I assume the guy died who carved all those things.
I I don't know the specifics of that. I apologize.
It was sold.
But it.
I'm sorry, it was sold. It's a different.
Okay, I I know you would.
So those were the things that I submitted to Medina County Planning Commission on behalf of the HOA president.
The next topic is, as as most of you probably know, there has been a request for annexation of the corner where Buzzard Roost is, where Discount Drug Mart was proposed to go. That doesn't have any impact on us yet. The BZA did look at that and did provide a conditional use uh for a drive-through. So i- it's nothing that we have to worry about. The one thing that I do wanna just, as from a zoning perspective, remind you is that for annexation, the property has to be continuous, that they're seeking to annex. And so what we'll wanna watch is if this property does get annexed, the next one down the road on three oh three is the senior housing. Followed by a couple vacant, well, a couple lots that very well might go business or they'll attempt to go business if those lots are ever sold. And we got a commercial space, a business space next to the senior housing. So when we look at what we wanna do in that section, we really wanna look, start looking at what Brunswick is doing and potentially consider trying to near that to discourage. Um, property owners from seeking annexation. Because, for instance, if we start restricting what can happen uh by the senior housing, then senior housing has an incentive to annex. And then we're moving it down further down through a three. So it's just something for us to start to think about. And we'll see where this goes. And if if the annexation, you know, doesn't make it through, we're in a very different position. But if it does go through, we'll wanna start looking at what Brunswick is doing with their zoning along that line. And and try to consider matching it to avoid encouraging other. Landowners to seek annexation. It's again, only those properties that are. Continuous to a Brunswick property that we have to worry about.
Do we know who submitted the request?
The property owners?
Well, no, no.
It's been sold. Um, it's like West one thirty, something, something LLC. It's an LLC that just owns that. Property. The, uh, before I do the next, well, just to announce, the next regular zoning commission meeting is April sixth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, we received two emails regarding future items for discussion, one being related to nuisances. That was the topic that we just had now. Um, I I I think that's a topic that we probably do wanna discuss as part of these text amendments. Um, so I'll put it, I'll leave it, you know, it it won't appear on the new business section yet. Because I try to limit how many items we have on the new business at any one time to those that I hope to accomplish that night. Um, but I do think that we'll look into the nuisance section as part of this package of text amendments. Did you have something to say, Mr. Marzull? You were looking at me like you were.
I'm ready to speak.
No, perfect. And the other one related to senior housing, specifically multi-dwelling units within senior housing. Um, senior housing is allowed within the B, conditionally permitted within the B one, B two district. Uh, this is a topic that I think we're going to wanna wait to see what happens with the annexation on. Uh, because I really think that that will guide what that looks like. So that one, I'll also keep on our set of new business and we'll see where it comes in the next few months. And then where we are in terms of tax amendments. And then we'll evaluate whether that topic is a topic that we want to proceed with discussion with or not.
Last month, you also mentioned conservation developments. Are they still on the list somewhere?
We'll discuss those, we'll discuss automobile service stations. Um, these were just new topics I wanted to briefly just introduce that we have. But as I said, I don't wanna, we used to have a subject top, subject manner list, and it just had a running list of items that we wanted to discuss. But I didn't think that that, I I thought that that was doing a disservice to the public because they might be very interested in item seven on that list. And then come to a meeting and then realize, wait a minute, you're four months from item seven. So I'm trying to keep the new business at just the topics I hope to have some level of discussion on. Um, but absolutely, guys on there. Uh, I have nothing else. Miss Crew?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Marzull?
Good to go.
Mr. Manley?
Nothing.
The single man?
Nothing.
Let's see. Mr. Wilson? Members of the public?
No.
Perfect. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn at eight thirty-nine PM. So moved by Marzull.
Second.
Seconded by Crew, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.